...be in attendance this morning. And first up, we have a discussion regarding the 2022 Penile County primary and general election handling. Mr. Volkmer, you are up, sir.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Kent Volkmer, Penile County Attorney. I have an update from Jerry and the elections team. She could not make it. She is there. They're hoping to finish up here very soon. They're in full recount mode, and it is an all-hands-on-deck measure. However, she did want me to let the board know that the hand count has been completed. There were 12 people that participated. It was six from each party. In total, five different precincts were counted. It was precincts number 91, 33, 18, 59, and co-located precincts 13/105. The precincts were randomly selected by the party chairs. The precincts were pulled, excuse me, the precincts pulled were tabulated for the recount on machines one and three. And then the hand count was representative test of the tabulating capabilities of both those machines that worked. That's really what they're saying is, our recount's being ran on machines one and three. So we ran those ballots through one and three, so we knew what it was at, and then we did the hand count afterwards. In total, the hand count board counted 1,875 total ballots. The board found no discrepancies between the electronic tabulation and their hand count in four of the precincts. So precincts 91, 59, 18, and 33 had zero discrepancies. The combined precinct 13/105 did have a one-vote difference. That vote was in favor of the Hamada and Horn side of things. It was the consensus of all board members that the difference was a result of one ballot, that a human would have discerned the voter's intent to vote for these two candidates, but the machine did not read those votes. So when all, everybody looked at it, they said, "It's clear what the voter wanted to do." But the machine is, it's a yes or no there. There's no sort of intent that is ever weighed in. That difference is less than the designated margin of error, which would be 1% or 3% of, three, there could have been three votes different.
1% or three ballots, I think, is that the...
Yes. Yes, ballots, yes. The hand count board convened on Monday morning at 9:00 AM and finished just after 5:00, so they had a very full day. That is actually less time than it took after the election. But the reason is, they were only counting two races. They were only looking at those two. So it was a much quicker process. And then Jerry did ask that I notify the board, and hopefully the elections, or excuse me, the hand count board that was there. It was a great experience. Elections Department certainly welcomed them coming in. Everybody had a good time. It was a great experience, and they were happy and hope they will come back in the future.
But just to shine a light on that, that was 5% of the vote, and that was 12 people. It took nine hours to count. I think it was 1,400 votes, I heard, yesterday?
1,875.
Well, but yesterday, it had been nine hours and 1,400 ballots with two races. So just as a reference for people that want to hand count, I mean, it takes a long time. And if you, if you went to all the races that we had in the past election, it would take many, many hours.
Certainly.
Okay.
That is the update from the Elections Department. They are hoping that they're going to wrap up here. Again, we have until next Wednesday to have it done. They, they believe that everything will be completed well before that time. So we'll be in compliance with the statute. The next update I have is really regarding the lawsuits. So there is one lawsuit that we are currently a party to, and that is the lawsuit that was filed by Abe Hamada. One of the things in that lawsuit he requested was for the hand count to be stopped. The court declined that request. The Secretary of State's office has filed a motion to dismiss, essentially saying that he's asking for the votes to be set aside. He's asking that he be named the successor, the successful, excuse me, Attorney General. And the Secretary of State's office is filing, saying, "It's too early. We don't even have the recount done. You may actually be the successful candidate with those votes, so why would we set them aside?" We are really a nominal party at this point, meaning we are tracking it. We are named, but we are not actively engaged. We're not filing responses. We're just along for the ride, so to speak. There is a second lawsuit that we are not a party to, and that was filed by a gubernatorial candidate, Carrie Lake. She filed against Maricopa County, not against us. Again, we are tracking it. We're watching what's happening, but we were not named as a party, and we have no involvement in that case. And then there is a third lawsuit. And I know at least a couple of board members have reached out because their constituents have reached out. Senator Sonny Borelli, as well as residents of Mojave County, have filed a lawsuit against Maricopa County and the Secretary of State. The Maric, excuse me, the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, I believe, is set to consider whether they want to join that motion sometime later this week. I've heard it's Thursday, but we're not, we're unable to confirm that. Essentially, what that lawsuit is saying is, Maricopa's elections were so poorly run that every Maricopa vote should be thrown out, and we shouldn't count a single Maricopa County resident vote. Legally, that is highly, highly, highly unlikely to occur. If you think about it, 62% of the state's population lives in, in Maricopa County. If you were to eliminate all of those votes, not by fault of the voters, you would be disenfranchising almost 2 million people.
A few, a few more lawsuits?
I'm certain there would, there would be a handful of additional lawsuits. I have no idea as to what any other counties are going to do, but I do know that this is supposed to be an agenda item upcoming for the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. That is sort of the update with those three lawsuits. Again, at this point, it is only the Hamada that, that we're a party to, and we're really nominal. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the Board Supervisor Surti?
So yeah, I've been following the Mojave County thing as well. So you're saying that citizens have filed suit against Maricopa County, not the Board of Directors, the Board of Supervisors?
Yes. So the, the title of that action is Joseph Sonny Borelli and Jane and John Doe at All. So Jane and John Doe is just a generic term that's used in the legal world for unidentified or generic parties. It was filed, actually, in the Superior Court of Mojave County, and it has no, it's not Sonny Borelli as senator in his official capacity. It's him as a resident and as a voter. That is the only lawsuit, to our knowledge, that's actually been filed at this point.
Because my office actually called Mojave County, County Clerk, and they said they have no meeting scheduled until January, so they could possibly do an emergency meeting and have it so that they could join in.
They certainly could. It would be their ability to do that. Our understanding from their counsel is that, that there was likely to be a meeting. They may have changed their mind. I know that there was considerable discussion amongst legal counsel, as well as the board, and the advisability of, of getting involved. I, I will tell you, Vice Chair, and, and members of the board, if we get involved with it and we lose, we would have to pay that as a government entity, which is something I know that Mojave County is considering. If, if they initiate the suit and they're unsuccessful, they're going to end up paying those legal fees. So that is one of the things that I believe is likely being discussed directly with the board. So the board has the ability. They could join. The board could file their own, but at this point, we have no formal indication what way they are, are going to go.
What kind of costs are you talking?
Legal fees.
50 bucks?
Oh, no.
$5,000? 50,000? What, what does that cost?
Keep going. Depending on the amount of litigation, how long it goes, yes. So Katie Hobbs, for example, uses outside counsel. The Secretary of State's office uses outside counsel for this. I believe they use Brockelman Coppersmith, who we've actually used. That was the group that looked at our issues we had with the primary, and I, our bill was north of, I believe, 50 grand that we paid just to them for that. And that didn't even get to true, real litigation. So you, you could easily get into the six figures, depending on depositions and what happens. It's hard to estimate because it's whenever the, the suit ends. You just, whatever the attorney's bill, you would be cutting the check for those individual payments, assuming that, one, you lose, and the court orders those attorney's fees.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, you got a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we counted 5% of the ballot, of the total of the county or just the race?
Just 5% of day-of votes.
Oh.
So it was 5% of the 45,000, give or take, of the day, day-of votes.
Okay. And we found one error in 5%. So if they counted the entire, if they were to audit the entire county, he might, we might find up to 19, if the math works out.
In theory, yes. It could be more, it could be less. I mean, again, there was four that had no. There was one that had one issue, but again, it, it was specifically, the machine didn't read it, but when human put eyes on it, they said, "No." You, you can clearly tell this is what their intention was. So think of, you know, you fill in a bubble that, that is just a little bit off-center. Think of, of some of our, you know, people that maybe have some issues with their manual dexterity, and if you're trying to fill in a bubble, sometimes you don't fill it in great. It can be off to the side. There's a lot of things going on. Maybe you have poor eyesight. But when human eyes looked at it, human eyes immediately said, "Look, it is abundant." And again, this is bipartisan. Both Democrats and Republicans looked at it and said, "It's clear that the vote really was for Hamada and it was for Horn." We found that in one example, where the machine, it just wasn't close enough. The machine said yes, but human eyes said...
In a race that's this close, I can see where statewide, you know, Hamada may have a case of...
So certainly, I mean, that's why we do the recounts. There, there likely is to be some changes on those. Now, whether it gets to, I think, 511, he's down, we don't know at this point. And again, that was only a day of, so you actually, you have all of the earlys and all of those things as well.
Thank you.
This is just a prime example of teaching kids how to color in the lines, right?
I'm going to defend our constituents here on this one, Chair. Just, you know, there's a lot of things that are going on. You have people that, that maybe are getting up in age and their ability to...
Careful, careful.
I'm just saying, it can happen. There's a lot of things that can happen. I mean, we, we try and make it as easy as possible for people to vote, and we have the, the handicap accessible to express votes, but a lot of people don't want to use those. They said, "No, I, you know, for 60 years, I've been voting this way. I want to continue to vote this way." And we do our best to, to interpret what they're doing without, you know, falling outside the line, so to speak. So it's, it is, never do we think it's intentional. A lot of times, it is because of physical or other issues that are addressing it. And that's why it's important that we do put eyes on it, just to make sure that their vote is cast in the way that clearly they, they intend that it should be.
So in a case like that, did it, did the machine spit it out? Is that what happened? Or did it just not count it? I mean, I mean, you say that if, if the machine couldn't count it, because, I mean, I've watched them do it, so does it throw it to the spit-out tray?
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily spit it out because it would just treat it as an undervote. Because you, you could vote for, for example, if they voted for Hamada and Horn, likely they voted a Republican ticket. So they may have said yes to Carrie Lake, and that was there. And maybe they said yes to Blake Masters, but as they got down, the bubbles got lighter and lighter and went through. So it would only kick it out if there was nothing. If it was just one, and they couldn't read it, it would be just considered an undervote, and it would not have kicked out a ballot for that one mistake.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Volkmer. Appreciate it. Next up, item two, discussion approval disapproval of resolution number 121422-AD22-011, declaring a state of emergency relating to the damage caused by countywide flooding. And I have Ms. Prock. I see you sitting back there. Good morning. Long time no see.
Good morning. Long time no see. Good morning, Chairman McClure and Board of Supervisors. I am Courtney Prock and the Administrative Manager for the Office of Emergency Management. On December 3rd, a storm system came into Penile County, and it rained for about 30 to 35 hours, give or take where you were located. During the storm, Arizona City received around four inches of rain. And if you know Arizona City, you know that there was water everywhere. PCSO and Public Works Maintenance Staff had over 20 call-outs to close roads throughout Arizona City. Once the rain had stopped, Public Works and the Office of Emergency Management has been out assessing the damages in Arizona City, as it is the hardest-hit area in Penile County. As of yesterday, there are 43 sites. 38 sites are in Arizona City, and we are continuing to do damage surveys out in that area. So we, the damage assessment estimate as of today is $523,500. And so we are asking to do a declaration to the state to get funds to fix the damages in Arizona City.
To be repaid for what we expend, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Surti?
Yeah, I see Andy's here today. What is different about this than what happened over the summer? I'm looking at some of this damage, and it does look terrible, but in the area north of, in my district, was hammered just as bad with just as much damage. How were we able to handle that without it being an emergency, and yet this we do? We have, what, what is the difference?
So we did, I believe we did do an emergency declaration, and we are working on getting that money back as well. In your area, we have the DEMA funds, and we also have FHAW, FHWA funds. So we are working with both entities to get those repaired as well.
Okay. Thank you.
We did do an emergency declaration back in the summer. Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman? If I can...
You, over there, yes.
I'd like to clarify. Well, the majority of the damage was in Arizona City. There were some sites in the eastern part of the county that were included, and it is a countywide declaration for, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, in this paperwork, it shows that it shows Apache Junction, Arizona City, Casa Grande, Hidden Valley, Oracle, Riverside, and San Tan, on this graph, yes. Very well. Thank you.
And I also gave you, sorry, handouts from survey 123 that gave us all the data and some pictures and information regarding the storm damage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing, seeing none, may I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item two, resolution 121422-AD2201, as presented.
I have a motion as their second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Prock. And item three, presentation of the draft Penile County Fairgrounds Master Plan. Mr. Taylor, I see your name, and I see you, and I see your name.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Chairman. Chairman, Board, Kent Taylor, Director of Open Space and Trails. So I'm going to, in just a second, I'll introduce our consultant that's helping us with this project, but I wanted to give you some history on what we're doing here today. So the work session is to present and solicit feedback on the draft master plan for the Penile County Fairgrounds. Some history on the fairgrounds. Fairgrounds was first developed in the 1950s. The first fair was in 1957, and I understand the entry fee was 25 cents, from what we just found out this morning. The site's approximately 120 acres. There are also a couple of, of other county facilities on the site. Animal care sits on the site, as well as a public works yard. Those are not included in our, in our project. In 2011, Penile County entered into a, an agreement with the Central Arizona Fair Association, and we call that CAFSA, to operate the fairgrounds on behalf of the county. This agreement included a lease, a management agreement, and then, and a concession agreement. The management agreement included a provision that the county and CAFSA would cooperate on the development of a long-term master plan for the facility, which is why we're here. And as far as we know, to the best of our knowledge, there has never been a comprehensive master plan for the facility. So a very timely item for, for the facility. And with that, I'm going to introduce Don McGann from McGann and Associates, and he'll go through the presentation.
Good morning, Mr. McGann.
Good morning. Chairman McClure, members of the board. As we started this project, we thought it was important to ask a very simple question, and that is, do the fairgrounds currently have a role, and will they continue to have a role as a public recreational facility and community event venue in Penile County? We really wanted to understand kind of how that fit into the fabric of, of, of the county and, and what it was in terms of a county asset. And as we worked through the process, I think the answer to that question is a very strong yes. It's yes because it, the, the fairgrounds support historic and current, the historic and current role of agriculture in the county, certainly a, a major economic factor. It's, yes, it does have a role because it's really the only public venue for large community events, be it the fair or festivals and things such as that. And also, I think it's yes because it has the potential to expand the range of, of events and activities that can be held there, and can, can continue to be a real asset for, for the county. So with that, we established a, you know, basic goal for this master plan project, and that was to develop a long-range plan for the redevelopment and enhancement of the fairgrounds. I think a couple of key points here. One is long range. We don't expect that this would happen overnight, that this is probably a 10-year-plus plan, and so I think that's important to acknowledge. Redevelopment in that both replacement of facilities and new facilities, kind of a really comprehensive look at the, at the, at the fairgrounds. And enhancement, really changing this to a place where people want to go. I think a place to start, then, was just taking a look at the existing conditions. And these are a couple of photographs taken 37 years apart, one in 1985 and, and one just this year. And if you look closely, I think the only discernible difference is where, where the cars are parked. There really has not been any investment in new, new facilities, new infrastructure, new buildings over that period of time. In spite of that lack of investment, the fairgrounds continue to operate and, and attract over 64,000 people a year and host a number of important community events, certainly the county fair and farm shows and various festivals. So it's holding its own, but it's not, not moving forward. So as we engaged in this planning process, there were a number of different steps, and we won't go through these in detail, but initially, some very detailed field reconnaissance, and then working with staff and with the CAFSA staff as well, coming up with some concepts, additional workshops to review those, refine concepts, ultimately to the point where we are today, where we have a draft master plan. It's not final. We're asking you to review it, and it's also being reviewed concurrently with the, by the CAFSA board. We'll make some final adjustments and have that plan as a, a final report. Working through that, there are, I think, some important findings in terms of what the assets of the fairgrounds are. Certainly with 120 acres, there's lots of room to, to continue to have the fair and to continue to have other events and, that are staged there. The layout of the site actually works pretty well, in spite of the fact, as Kent noted, that there really had never been a, a comprehensive plan for the, for the facility. You can have a small event with 20 or 30 people. You can have the county fair with several thousand people. And generally speaking, it works. Also, there are some, there, there's a basic infrastructure there. If you wanted to have an, an event there next week, there's power to plug into, there's water to provide that service as needed. The flip side of that are, there's some real liabilities. That infrastructure, while it's there, is aging, and it's either at or past its useful life, and so there's some comprehensive improvements that need to take place there. A number of buildings, some are in pretty good shape, but others just not suitable for a, a whole variety of uses. Nobody's going to rent or lease a building in June or July that's not air-conditioned, and so, and, and also, just because it really, there has been little investment over the years, that's, it's just not that competitive or, or is a non-competitive user experience. You might go there for the fair, but you're not likely to say, "This is awesome. I'm going to come back for the next event that's held here." So also, part of that planning process was input from stakeholders, and I'd like to thank staff and also the CAFSA board and, and staff for kind of their assistance as we worked through this process. And a couple of key things that came out of that, that discussion, or those discussions, and one was retaining the current site. There was some discussion about starting over in a new location, building a new fairgrounds. I think the very strong consensus was, we have some assets here. It makes more sense, and it makes the most sense, to proceed and, and use this site. There's also an interest in just preserving opportunities for legacy events, you know, the county fair and the livestock shows and, and those types of things. They've been kind of the lifeblood of, or the, the lifeblood of, of the agricultural community, and certainly will continue to be. But that said, there was also a clear recognition that to make this a financially viable facility, that there needed to be new opportunities created for a wider range of uses, you know, concerts or whatever it might be. And lastly, just kind of speaking to that issue of user experience, just kind of updating the facility so it's a place that people want to go. So real quickly, kind of the strategy for redevelopment involved a number of different things, both renovation and replacement. There are some buildings that are great. There's some buildings that, no matter how much money you put into them to fix them up, they're, they're not going to be a facility that's of interest to promoters and, and people who are running different events. And that was based on a return on investment evaluation. You can put tons of money into an old building to correct ADA deficiencies and electrical code violations and things like that. Still not going to be a, a building that people want to, want to use. You know, and also with the notion that this is a long-term project, that there needed to be some phased implementation, there's understanding that this wasn't a project that was going to happen next year. And to make that work, that, you know, there was some logical sequence of projects to, to go from where we are today to where we want to be. And there needed to be some flexibility in that as well. Also, just being able to retain essential facilities. If the, the electrical system needs major upgrades, but you can't shut that off and still have a, have a county fair or other events, you can't tear down the existing restrooms until you have some new ones that come online. So those were some of the key points in, in the, in the strategy that we used. So this is a, just an illustration of the site plan or the master site plan, the site as it exists today, or the, that northern portion excluding the, the racetrack. Very briefly, on the racetrack, as you know, there's a new contract for an operator that will last five years, so we have not really addressed any changes to the racetrack, assuming that that, that will, that contract will be fulfilled in its, in its full term. So to, to, to get from today to this illustration here, we identified 13 different projects, and I won't go through all of them. Some of them you clearly understand, replacement of utilities, you know, upgrading and expanding the parking lot. But there are a few projects, I think five here, that I think are important and were really, have the potential to be transformational in terms of how the public uses and perceives the, the fairgrounds. So the first of these is a new event building. So this would replace those structures that you see illustrated to the left and in that aerial photo. I think some of these date back to that early fair of 1957 and, and are, are in pretty rough condition. So this would be the, kind of the signature facility for the fairgrounds. What it would include, or we're proposing that it be built in two phases. The area on the right would be the first phase, and that would include event rooms so that you could have any number of different parties or different activities that could, could, could occur in that space, and that could be divided into smaller or larger spaces. That first phase would, might also include a conference room with contemporary technology, so you could actually have a, a, a meeting, a, a prep kitchen that would support that, that event space, and also restrooms. Second phase would be built, and that would include a concession area with vending both to the outside and inside of the building, appropriate storage, office space, a, a dining area that, that would include both indoor and outdoor spaces, and, and new restrooms to replace the existing restrooms that are in rather old and in less than pristine condition. So obviously, a building like this, if it's going to be that prominent in, in its location and kind of the signature building for the fairgrounds, you want to also do that in an, in a cost-effective manner. And so the, the scheme that we've, are suggesting is to build this as a, you know, conventional clear-span metal building. But to do that with some detailing, and specifically by wrapping the perimeter of the building with a porch, that would kind of just give the, the facility some character and, and some interest. And so these are some illustrations of what that might look like from different vantage points around that, that portion. And for those of you who have been out there recently and you come through the entry gate, you know, to see this as opposed to what's currently out there, I think really does change the public's perception of, of what the fairgrounds are all about. Second project that I'll touch on here is the area to the north of that new building, an event lawn, existing conditions on the left, an outdoor space that could be used for anything from weddings to small concerts or whatever, could be used in conjunction with the, the, the new event building, but a nice outdoor space for a, a variety of different purposes. And then to the east of that new event building, also near the entry, what we're referring to as kind of the main street corridor, and kind of see... You can kind of see in the, in the images to the left, uh, how that's being utilized. Very valuable real estate in terms of the, the overall campus, uh, but, um, not the, not being used to its, its, uh, highest purpose, if you will. So the intent here would be to, to take a look at that area, kind of re-clean it up, redevelop it, make it a space where you could have food trucks or exhibits or, uh, vending or small concerts or whatever. And I think in, in aggregate, these three projects, the new building, the, the out, exterior spaces to the north and to the east, really kind of change the whole character of, of the fairgrounds and, and kind of give it some new life. Less glamorous would be a, a new RV campground. There are a number of, uh, events there that have, um, participants and exhibitors and vendors that are there for several days. They do camp there. It's kind of sketchy in terms of how, how they are accommodated currently. But this is not intended to be a commercial RV park. This is, uh, providing some basic services that make this a desirable place for those promoters and those event, um, uh, sponsors to come and, and, and use the space, uh, so basic support for them. Then lastly, the operations and maintenance building, particularly as, as these new, uh, facilities come online. Current facility is deficient in a number of manners, code violations, ADA, uh, issues and just, uh, secure storage. So, um, a new, uh, O and M building and, and yard are certainly going to be important. Uh, again, kind of treating that, uh, cost-effectively with a simple metal building, but with some detailing, uh, that would, uh, provide some interest and, and, and make that a, a, a desirable and functional, uh, asset for the, for the overall fairgrounds. So that are, those are some of the key projects that would, would kind of transform the, the, um, uh, fairgrounds and are kind of central to the, to the proposed master plan. Of course, the next question I'm sure you're going to ask and, and we anticipated is, what's that going to cost? And so based on December twenty-twenty-two dollars, we have taken a look at each of those thirteen projects and come up with an estimate. In aggregate, the cost for these improvements is estimated to be about thirteen million dollars. I stress that that is current, uh, cost estimates based on very, very preliminary, uh, design. But a, a, and as projects are built, two years or five years from now, obviously there's construction cost escalation. But this, I think is important to establish a baseline. This is the magnitude of what we think it would take to, uh, to, to implement, uh, over whatever period of time, the, the improvements that are proposed by the master plan. So wrapping it up here, uh, next steps, uh, certainly we'll, uh, be working with both, uh, receiving your comments and, and integrating those into the, uh, into the master plan. We're likely to have a, a meeting here with the, uh, Central Arizona Fair Association folks and get their comments. And I think their, uh, preliminary feedback is positive, but you know, there's some details that they would like to, to work on. And then, uh, have a formal adoption of, of the master plan, which is, I think, important because that allows, uh, pursuit of grants. If, if there is a, an adopted master plan for a facility, uh, that certainly helps, uh, in terms of, uh, raising funds for the, for the project. So those are the short-term, uh, next steps, uh, then followed by, you know, incremental funding of these projects and implementation. One last item that we would recommend is that, uh, the county revisit this in about five years. Times change and, and priorities change and opportunities present themselves. And I, I think it's good practice to kind of just revisit and update that master plan in, in, in about five years' time. So that's, uh, a, a, a brief presentation of the, of the master plan. And, uh, if you have comments for either me or Kent, um, we're here.
Are there any questions from the board?
I do.
You do Supervisor Surti? I do.
I do, yes. I've said that before. Okay. You and Kent could possibly answer this together. I have two different things I'm going to ask, completely different. Uh, understanding that building the buildings is necessary down there, whatever, but the improving of the front lawn and the cosmetics. Almost every community has master gardener-type garden clubs. Rather than spend county money on that, if we could allow these groups to come in and do some landscaping on their own, not only could it save some funds, but it also gives a sense of pride as people go there and say, look to their kids, we did that over there and then that stays. So I would like you to keep that option available on that. And the other thing, when else would we have a chance to, to discuss this? But over the years, the state fairgrounds in downtown Phoenix, a lot of people don't like it, a lot of people are afraid to go down there. I've actually heard discussion that it could possibly move someday. And if it would, I know we're not ready for it now, but possibly a, a county fairground like this with lots of wide open space. Have you heard anything like that? I know we're not, we don't have a concert venue like they use. But I would just like everybody to be prepared and welcome. If, if they do talk about possibly giving it up down there, could we take it over? And the state would then possibly have funding to, to improve this fairgrounds, which would help everybody.
Well, I'll, I'll defer to Kent on that, but only make the comment that I think that makes the case for keeping this a flexible plan. And if it needs to be revisited in a couple of years, because there are opportunities such as that, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah Supervisor Surti, um, you haven't heard that, I mean, there, there has been chatter, um, about that, the state fairgrounds moving. I haven't heard anything recently. Yeah, um, so, but I do have a contact at, um, the, at, at the state fair. So I can reach out to him and find out what the latest is on that, definitely.
So an example would be when I was with the city of Apache Junction, I believe Gilbert, who has Gilbert Days, they don't really have a rodeo arena and at one time they wanted to have a rodeo. So they were shopping their rodeo around to, to communities that did have a rodeo grounds. It would be Gilbert Days held in Queen Creek or Apache Junction. So same situation, if, if something happens to that, uh, facility down there, which is very antiquated, by the way, you know, that maybe we make some agreement to, to do it.
Yep.
Keep it on the table.
We'll, we'll reach out, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, uh, Kavanaugh, I believe you had a question.
Thank you. As we were flipping through the slides, I noticed that there appeared to be only twelve stalls for women's restrooms. Is that, is that the total of the restrooms that we saw?
There, well, there would be two restrooms, um, it, as part of that, that, uh, new event building. And as, as Misty with the fair association has indicated, you know, this is the concept. And, and they certainly have some thoughts in terms of details like that. This is, you know, the big picture, the thirty-thousand-foot, you know, approach to, um, you know, how this, how the fairgrounds would be redeveloped. But yeah, there's lots of detail and, and probably needs to be a few more stalls.
That, was that just out of curiosity, are you counting both buildings that were, they were?
I saw two, I saw men's, I saw the urinals on the left. It looked like the ladies only had twelve and I tried to count the number of cars here and I thought, this isn't going to work. We're going to big lines and complaints.
Well, I think there's another dimension to that and, and, you know, for the huge events to, to build restrooms specifically for the county fair and have enough and then have them idle the rest of the time. I presume that you use some portables from time to time, you know? Yeah. So investing in, uh, for that, that one event, um, you know, probably doesn't make sense. But for other events, they need to work, yeah.
And for the RV slot, you said minimal support and is that just electricity? What's planned for that?
Water and electricity for each of those, uh, in the center of that. And, uh, again, I, there's a combination of dry sites and, and sites with utility hookups. And that can certainly be massaged, but, um, yeah, just a standard, uh, RV hookup.
And there's, there are dumps on the way out somewhere?
There is a dump station proposed and I think you can see that, uh, on the image here, uh, uh, north of the, of the, uh, campground there and to the east of, southeast of the O and M facility.
And on the southeast, I think it'd be the southeast corner, no, it'd be the, I don't know where I'm looking, but on the, on the diagram on the lower right here, there's five, it looks like five vehicles parked. There's a place in Indiana called Deer Creek Music Center and they've, they've scooped the ground out and it's, it's a lawn. And it holds, you know, I don't know how many people, but they have, it's a big concert draw. And so that, that's something we might want to consider. Does that indicate all paved, is all this gray paved area?
No, uh, it's, it's, it's conceptual. Portions of the parking lot would certainly be paved, uh, some of them are now and we would expand that. There, in other areas, it's probably more gravel surface for dust control.
Okay.
That's a lot of pavement that, um, would be expensive and, and have to deal with stormwater runoff.
Well, I'd like to see, I'd sure like to see it done sooner rather than later. Costs will always go up, the construction market is slowing down. This might be a, a window of opportunity to get it done pretty quick and, and have a nice venue for the county.
Certainly some of it, but, but again, we're back to this is a fancy napkin drawing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Things change. But I do like, I do like the content, I've sat in on the meetings, obviously with you out at the fairgrounds, so.
Thank you.
And with Misty, so thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, okay, thank you very much, appreciate your time. Uh, item number four is presentation of the draft Santan Valley Conceptual Parks Plan. Mr. Taylor, your backup, and I have Ken Ballard, who will be joining us by telephone, is that correct?
We hope so, yep.
Oh, it would, it would be nice, that's what my notes say, so I'm just saying.
Yeah, we're, and we're going to bring Don back here for you too. So Ken's our sub-consultant on this. Thank you Chairman. So, um, since Don's from out of town and I work with him on a couple of projects, we thought we'd kill two birds and one stone and bring him here. And then this morning I found he's retiring, so what a better way for him to get.
No, that's not allowed.
Yeah, he didn't ask me either, so, um.
We'll take a vote.
So, um, today, um, this portion, uh, the work session, we're here to present a conceptual parks plan for the Santan Valley area. This work builds on the larger Santan Valley area plan, which was completed, um, five years ago or so and dovetails with discussions that Supervisor Goodman, um, has been engaging with area residents, the development community, schools, um, and other interested stakeholders over the last few years. You know, and part of the plan, staff's interested in hearing from the board, you know, what your thoughts are, um, towards what the county's role is and parks and recreation facilities in the area. So after that, I'm going to turn it over to Don again, um, and Ken on the phone.
Thank you Chairman McClure and, and members of the board. Just by introduction, uh, Ken Ballard is, uh, part of our, our team. Ken is with Ballard King, they're office up in Denver, but their firm works on parks and recreation plans and community center plans all over the country. I think as of, uh, last year, they have now worked in all fifty states and have just a wealth of, of, uh, knowledge in terms of developing community park systems, uh, throughout the country, so.
May I just interrupt, did Mr. Ballard make it on the phone?
Ken, for the record, can I get you to announce?
Yes, uh, this is Ken Ballard with Ballard, King, King and Associates. And a pleasure to be part of, uh, this presentation, uh, this morning.
Yeah, thank you for joining in, okay, go ahead, Mr..
Yeah, and we will, uh, I think, bring Ken in at the end of this, rather than kind of go back and forth. I think, uh, there's some questions that we have for you that, um, we would like Ken to, to help us with as well. So some project goals that we started with for this project and, and I think first and foremost was to provide you, uh, elected officials with some information needed to make some important policy decisions related to how you want to be involved in park development in the Santan Valley. And we're looking for some direction from you as well. Uh, this project was not, uh, did not include a public outreach. And so this conceptual plan is one that we think would ultimately be presented to and ultimately refined by the public. But it's to, 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 to have a place to start, so. Those were the, the basic goals of the, of the, uh, project. The planning process, a couple of key steps here. One was to, you know, in the Santan Valley, there is no public park system. And so we were, uh, attempting to describe what a system would be that would be compatible or, or similar to, uh, the park systems in peer communities in the state of Arizona. You know, what level of service do they provide? How might that translate to the Santan Valley? Uh, the second would be to, um, kind of make some recommendations in terms of how do you organize as you build a, a park system from the ground up? How do you, how do you build that? How does it get organized? And how do you event, prevent some pitfalls, uh, that have some long-term consequences? Third was then, uh, again, that same question, what's this going to cost? And, uh, this is very, you know, order of magnitude, but important to understand kind of what's being undertaken. And then lastly, to, to give you some options in terms of, um, and your, get your thoughts in terms of how the county should be involved in this process. So the scope of the project is one to provide a park system for that area that was defined by the Santan Valley Special Area Plan. Currently has a population of about a hundred and five thousand people. Uh, there are some existing neighborhood, uh, HOA, uh, facilities, but there is no park system, uh, in that area. And we started, you know, based on our experience with input from Ken, you know, kind of for communities of a hundred thousand people, what are the, kind of what are the range of facilities that are included in a, in a typical municipal park system? And, uh, they include items certainly like aquatic facilities and fields, fields of all different types and courts and other, uh, recreational facilities, be it a, a skate park or, um, a disc golf course, all of those things. And so this was a, a, a place to start. And then we took that list and kind of looked at how it related to the Santan Valley. What resources are available there? How do we kind of refine and, and, and tighten up this, this list of facilities? And so things like a sports field tournament, tournament complex, uh, replicating something similar to Bell Bank Park doesn't make any sense. So, uh, same thing with the equestrian facilities with, uh, Horseshoe Park and Equestrian Center in Queen Creek, you know? And kind of working through the lists, whether it be golf, that where there are opportunities for golf or playgrounds, where there are playgrounds in the HOA facilities and even, um, kind of the performing arts element where you do have some, uh, theaters and auditoriums in schools. And that resulted in kind of a shorter list, um, you know, that, um, we think represents kind of what might be included in this park system for the Santan Valley.
Just a quick question, what is a pump track?
Pump track is a bicycle facility. Uh, it, uh, is where there's different contouring of the ground. It can be earthen, it can be concrete, uh, and you maneuver through this basically without pedaling. And it's, it's a popular kind of variation on mountain bikes and, and, and that type of thing.
Okay, I've just, I've just never heard that as a, as a thing.
Well, it's kind of like pickleball courts, they're, it's something new and, and, uh, I'm sure you, you will hear of it in the, in the near future. So having a list is one thing, but, uh, kind of establishing how many of these facilities you need to, to build out a park system was also part of this process. And so we took a look at four, uh, peer communities, if you will. Uh, the town of Queen Creek, uh, Goodyear, Morena in Oro Valley, so some close, some a little further away in Arizona. And we looked at how many fields and how many courts and how many facilities they had on a per thousand, uh, unit of population and took that average and then if there's a hundred and five thousand people in the Santan Valley, that gave us kind of a baseline of kind of what a, a fully developed park system might look like in terms of, of quantities. And so this is kind of a graphic illustration of that and where we won't go through all of it, but, um, most of these communities have or will have a community center and they will have multiple pools and lots of fields. And so this is kind of quantifying, uh, kind of not just what's in the, in the park system, but how many facilities need to, to, to kind of fully develop it. So that's helpful, but Santan Valley is unique, at least somewhat unique and, and there are some, uh, certainly demographic considerations that, that we, uh, took a look at. And one is kind of just, this is a, generally a younger, uh, family community. And so kind of, uh, addressing priorities in terms of what that population really looks like relative to a more generic, uh, uh, community. So that was certainly part of the, the consideration. Also, uh, what resources are available? And we took a look at the high schools and the, in the, uh, K through eight junior high schools and kind of did an inventory of, uh, what facilities might be part of this broader picture of providing recreational services to, uh, county, or to Santan Valley residents. I think the important thing here is that while those facilities can contribute, that there are some impediments to saying, we have a field at the high school, it can be part of our park system inventory. And some of the reasons for that are campus security, which is becoming increasingly important. Obviously, you can't use those facilities during school hours and teams, as they should, get priority for use of those facilities. There's some rental fees and insurance. There are some rental fees and insurance requirements that most school districts now require. And I think an important one is, most schools, other than their main football soccer stadium, do not have lighted facilities outdoors. And that's really an important part of a successful park system in the, in the desert southwest, being able to use those facilities in the evening, particularly when it's a little bit cooler. There are a few, but not many, community providers of some of these recreational resources, but you know, the restriction there is sometimes you need to be a member, sometimes you need to pay a fee or live in a specific area. So, while these are contributing, they don't necessarily address the true needs of a park system. So what we've concluded, and I think, you know, you know the county and the Santan Valley, is kind of the priorities here are developing, in its initial phases, a park system that addresses that need for youth sports. Multi-sport fields, diamond fields, courts, those types of things. Also, facilities for, for young adults, you know, the skate park in the, the pump track and the swimming pools and things like that. But not to the exclusion of other members, the adult and senior populations where, and I'm sure you've had requests for pickleball courts, you know, and dog parks and pathways and those types of facilities. So, that got us to this point here, where we not only have just kind of the, the facilities that would be part of a park system, kind of rough quantities in terms of what's required, but also some prioritization. And so, for example, a multi-gen community center at $35 million is not going to be, that's a long-term goal. That's not the, the high priority item. Swimming pool, competitive swimming pool, maybe that's, that's a medium-term priority, but at least getting a swimming pool for the community is important. So, the yellow dots here kind of represent what would be kind of higher priority items. So I think what this shows is, in kind of an abstract manner, kind of here's what the, this park system should and could include, and here are some priorities in terms of how to, how to develop that. So the second part of this is, once we kind of have a notion of what this would include, is how is the park system organized? And I think there are a couple alternatives, or several different alternatives. One would be a very dispersed system, where you have lots of parks, they're close to, to where people live, but don't have enough space to really build some of the bigger facilities that are needed. A regional approach, where there's, you know, a few regionally located parks, and then a central kind of recreational campus in the, where you invest all of your recreational dollars in developing kind of one site. And what comes to mind here is the Copper Sky Complex in Maricopa, where it's really, most of their facilities anyway, are, are located there. And then maybe a hybrid system, where you do have a concentrated, kind of focused campus for your parks, and then you have, complement them with some district parks to go along with that. If you look at kind of the merits and demerits of these different approaches, the more concentrated the park system can be in a central campus, when it comes to things like acquiring land, if you're acquiring one parcel, not 15, as you build those, as you staff those, and as you maintain those, that concentration becomes important and valuable. The downside is, it's less convenient to users. So a hybrid system kind of includes that concentrated effort, but with some more regional facilities that would make it easier for access for the public. So in terms of kind of what that might look like, this is an aerial photo of the Copper Sky Complex, and if you took all of those facilities that were on those previous slides, said, this is the park system for the Santan Valley, you could do this. That's 160 acres. So just, I think, kind of gives some kind of visual, a visual sense of kind of what, what's involved in developing that. The alternative would be to kind of modify that and more hybrid system, where you have, you know, you're, ultimately have your community center and, and groups of fields and other facilities, but complement that with a couple of district parks, make this park system a little more accessible to, to residents. So, that said, our, our recommendation would be to pursue that hybrid approach, recognizing that those facilities, those public facilities would be complemented by those existing HOA neighborhood parks that are scattered throughout the community. And then as a long-term goal, kind of connecting those with shared-use pathways and trails, so you have that integrated public component, the private component, and they're interconnected in a, in a reasonable manner. So, to the best of my knowledge, there has been no entity that has acquired and banked land for park development. So certainly as you build a park system, you will need to, or whoever builds a park system will need to address that. And there are some options in the area. Certainly there's state trust land that could be purchased, there are some undeveloped school district sites, there is a 56-acre Penal County-owned parcel. You could, as part of various approvals of large-scale developments, require some dedication of parkland and, and other approaches, but someone's going to have to acquire the land for, to build a park system. And just really quickly, to take a look at kind of what, some of the things that might be available, this shows in blue the, the state trust land that's available in that area, or that exists in that area. There's a couple of Florence School District parcels, take a quick look at, the county parcel is up to the north. My understanding, in, in meeting with you Supervisor Goodman, was that there's been some discussion about, you know, development of state trust land in the vicinity of the Poston Butte High School, certainly a candidate site for park development. The school sites are, as shown here, there's one that's 20 acres and one that's six acres. I think the caution here would be, if we focus on six-acre parcels, we end up with that, that scattered array of different park sites, but 20 acres is probably a more workable area. And the undeveloped county parcel up to the north. So, we haven't solved that problem, and I think as we get some feedback from you, we can be a little bit more specific in terms of recommendations on candidate sites for park system development.
Just a quick question. So when you're looking at the hybrid system, I saw, you know, I saw that you put Copper Sky up from, from Maricopa, and that's, you say it's a quarter section, 160 acres. And then you showed the picture with, well, if we did the hybrid, it would look like this. What, if you back up a couple of slides, what's the approximate size? There. What's the approximate size that you're looking at here? I mean, for the, are you doing like, 160, so it's like 90 acres at the south end of the right side of the picture, and then the others are smaller, some scale? These are relative?
Yeah, exactly. What we've, for purposes of kind of coming up with that cost estimate that we'll talk about in a moment, is 100 acres and 25 acres and 25 acres.
Okay.
Something along those range. Could it be 17 acres instead of 25? Absolutely. You know, it's, it's starting to kind of frame the, the land requirements for park development.
So 25 acres would do like the District 1 or District 2 parks?
Sure.
Something like that?
Absolutely.
And then 100 acres? Okay, I'm just trying to get a relative size, because there wasn't any number on there, so.
Right. So, this is a, kind of a unique situation, where this, this area, the Santan Valley, has grown to 100,000 people, and there is not a public park system. So, developing a park system from the ground up is certainly an expensive proposition. And so what we did is, we said, well, let's look at that hybrid system. We'll have 100-acre park, where it's anchored by, at least at some point in time, the multi-gen community center, and then we have two separate 25-acre district parks. Based on just really general numbers, what would it cost to, to acquire the land, to do the off-site improvements, to build the onsite infrastructure and utilities, the buildings, the field lights, and all of that? The number is pretty, pretty, pretty substantial. So, 100-acre, central recreational campus with, with those associated facilities, estimated in a very general sense to be about $100 million to, to, to complete that project. And the two district parks in the order of about $25 million. So, the, could these be built incrementally? Absolutely. You can acquire a parcel, build two fields and the associated parking lot and a restroom for substantially less than, than those amounts. These are kind of a, a general estimate, without escalation of kind of the, what it would cost to, to do the full build-out. Another important part here is not just the construction, but also staffing. And we took a look at some of those same peer communities in terms of what their staffing requirements are, or what their staffing requirements, staffing is for their park systems. And obviously, they take a very different approach to full-time and part-time employees. I know the Oro Valley uses a lot of summer, kids, hire kids for the summer and things like that. But I think this gives you an idea of, there's a substantial ongoing investment in, in staffing to operate of, of the park system fully built out, as, as been described here. And then I think it's also important to recognize that when you build the parks, or whoever builds the parks, the, the public's expectation is not just that you will mow the lawn, fix the irrigation system, and empty the trash cans, but there will be recreation programs. And when there's recreation programs, there's someone to do the online reservations and kids, and employees to, to implement those programs and, and what have you. So, there is an investment there, and when you add not just conventional urban parks, but you add an aquatic facility, certainly there's staffing requirements specific to that. Or if there's a natural resource component to the, to the park system, obviously, that has, has its own staffing requirement, so it's something to keep in mind. So that gets us to where we need some input from you, and three questions here that we'd like to bounce off of you and certainly get some feedback today, and, but also an open opportunities for you to kind of, to review this and, and provide to Kent kind of some direction in terms of how, how you want to proceed. And so, first one's pretty straightforward. I, I guess it's just confirmation that a park system that is similar in how it delivers park and recreation services to peer communities, kind of that scope is, it seems appropriate. And that organizing it, you know, in some nature, like that hybrid system where we're, we're not having parks in two- and three-acre parcels all over the Santan Valley. So just kind of get some confirmation that we're on the right track in, in that regard. I think the second one is, is very important, and that is just, you know, asking you, what you do here in this portion of unincorporated Penal County, other areas of Penal County, we'll see this as a precedent. And Santan Valley's a little bit different than most other areas in, in unincorporated areas in Penal County, but certainly there, I think, will be an expectation that you did this here, that it makes sense that they should receive that over there. And then, lastly, and I think important, most importantly, is, you know, what should the county's role be in developing the park system in, in the Santan Valley? And that's the, it's the big dollar question. And towards that end, I think there's, and, and this is where I, we have Ken here, and he can, he's worked on these approaches in, in other communities, and he can certainly help answer some questions. But some of the things that you could do, you could be kind of the planner and facilitator, and take the plan that comes from this project and say, go to the public and say, here's a plan, you know, we now, you need to figure out how this is going to get paid for, and how do, how do we build it? Kind of take, you're, you're initiating the process, but recognizing, without committing to, to getting into the urban park business. That's one approach. A joint use agreement partner is certainly possible, but I think this relates more to specific projects. And I think what comes to mind here is, if you wanted a pool, you might work with the school district, jointly fund the construction of a pool on, on a school site, with the understanding that they would maintain it, or there's some maintenance agreement, but both the school and the public have access to that facility. I don't know that that can be applied system-wide, but certainly is, is, is an avenue you could pursue. You could own property and lease it to others to develop parks and provide those services. Or you could jump in with both feet and be the developer and long-term operator of a municipal park system. There are, and Ken can speak to this issue of agencies that park, that contract with others. I don't know that this would solve the construction project, but certainly, operation and maintenance of a, of a park system could be, could be done on a contract basis. We're working with organizations like the Y in terms of funding those, but having them do the actual construction and operation of, of various park facilities, or some combination or something other.
So you mentioned Oro Valley a while ago, and talking about pools in conjunction with the high school or something like that. I know there at Canyon Del Oro High School, right next door to that property is, is a city pool. And the school uses it, and obviously the public uses it, and I don't know their, their agreement between them, but I know that that's a possibility. But the city owns it rather than the school, and so they're just letting them use it.
Absolutely, and I, I think that was built and funded by the, the town.
Yes.
But Canyon Del Oro High School, Ironwood Ridge High School, Push Ridge High School, all use that, as well as, you know, there's probably five or six different swim clubs that use it, from masters to youth swim programs, so.
It's a nice facility.
It's a nice facility, yeah.
So, and then a question came up. So, and this is for the board to think about. So if, if we develop these parks through, you know, builders and other contractual agreements, and Santan were to incorporate, would we want to maintain the management or the operation of those parks? Or would we want to turn it over and how, you know? That's a thought out there. I know, I'm, I'm looking at you. Yeah, I want you to, you know.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, the way I envision something like that is personally, that that's exactly what would happen, is that if there is a municipality that is created there, that they assume responsibility. But even prior to that, we've had several discussions with many of the stakeholders that are in that area from the schools, which is what Don, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mentioned, that they have a lot of interest here, not just our district schools, but the charter schools. Even to the, to the extent that one of the charter schools offered to pay for the building of the facility on property that we, the county, procure, and that it would become the county's property under certain caveat, of course, that they would have first rights to the swimming pool? Because this is a discussion that whenever we first, when I first had this discussion, it was with the major players as far as developers and large landowners in the Santan Valley area. And the discussion was all centered around six high schools, and the size and the mix of what we've got in the Santan Valley area. And that this would be more of an attraction for them to even further the developments that they have in the future, not to mention what they have the rest to build up because of the family mix. I personally look at this, is that some kind of a joint venture to where between us, the county, the developers, and even the community themselves, some kind of a taxing district or something of that nature, because maintenance is going to be a big issue. It's one thing to get them built, which is what you were referring to earlier, but then it's a whole different ballgame when it comes to the maintenance side of it. I'm willing to go out there and run a lawnmower, it'd bring me back to cutting hay back in the day, but nonetheless, that's still got to be maintained. And so, I, this is something that I would like to see, you know, first of all, either the first, the planner facilitator, or even a joint use agreement partner, but let's get out in front of the public, get their buy-in. I'm of the mindset, if there's no buy-in, we don't go forward. That's, that's, you know, I, I think, if this, if this area wants the amenities and things of that nature that they've been requesting, I think there needs to be some buy-in from the residents, as well as the developers that have helped bring this, this complexity to what our problem is. The other thing in, looking into the future, I'm glad we've done this, because now our planning department could actually start looking at this from what we're doing here. And if we can integrate this into future growth, and make it part of the future growth, that we look at a regional perspective on regional parks, and that connectivity between these communities, I think it would be very beneficial.
So we're buying a lawnmower for So, we're buying a lawnmower for Kent?
That's what we're doing.
You're just checking to make sure.
That's what we're doing.
Okay, great. And a trailer for behind his truck. Okay.
But I still think it's kind of premature for us to, but I'd like to continue the process of pursuing.
Well, this is the front end of the conversation.
Right.
But it's just where we go from here.
Correct.
So, I'm just questioning downline, I said, "So, if we do this and they become a city, then we turn it over to them, and then we do this in other parts of the county, too, so we become the developer and then we hand it over."
Yeah.
So, the upfront costs are, but we have to have some help on the front-end cost.
Right. Oh, yeah. I mean, that's, that's a big, that would be a big factor in that we have the developers, we have the support and financial support from all the key stakeholders that are there, including the schools. We have their support financially as well. Some of it could be in donation of land. I mean, you've got the Florence School District that has 25 acres, and that 25 acres has been a lengthy discussion about building some baseball fields on that particular facility. We've got the representative from our, the Little League Association that's here, and he's been fighting for years to find some baseball fields for these Little Leaguers, not to mention we've got Paladin, which has a youth program with well over, close to 10,000 kids that are participating, and they're having to use facilities in the town of Queen Creek, which is already busting at the seams. And they've got 10,000 kids from the San Tan Valley area that are participating in their sports programs, and no facilities to go to.
Okay. So, something you'd like to look into more here?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Mr. McGann, you have more? Are we going to Mr. Ballard now?
Well, Ken is here. If there are some questions, there were just a couple of slides. Next steps is, you know, what are the policies that you want us to proceed under, finalizing this plan? Then ultimately, you know, some type of public outreach that you've talked about, and then, you know, that phased implementation based on whatever guidelines and policies that you establish. So, that's the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Did you have more, Mr. Goodman?
No.
They might.
No, I think they're just sitting there, just smiling, looking at you. So, no, I think it's a great idea. I think that it's, I like the hybrid idea, and I like the fact that we're doing something like that. We just have to look further down the line, that this is what we would do in the rest of the county, and create a department to do that, or somehow, or by, you know, by kind of.
There is one more thing I'd like to add to that, and that is, yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, is that is, you know, we just had a presentation on the shortfall that we have with tax revenue dollars leaving our county and going into Maricopa County. We have that retail leakage. We could combine the effort of doing something on that state land, for instance, across from Poston Butte, that we could do a combination of kind of a business district along with some parks and recreational facilities. That's been, seemed to be a big theme in other communities that has integrated, you know, you go and you play ball with the kids, or they're participating in sports programs, and then they can go get an ice cream afterwards, or something like that, within a walking distance, or something along those lines. So, those are, so there's some bigger things that we could do here, again, working with a joint venture with other stakeholders, so that we're not the ones that are fronting the entire bill on this.
Okay.
I do have something to say now.
You do have, Supervisor Surti.
Well, Mike, I think you're mixing two things. When you said a business district and parks, I don't think you could really mix the two. State land, there's a couple, in my district, I have several that are state leases, one being the Renaissance Festival, that's a long-term state lease. And then the golf course, right as you get off the freeway in Apache Junction on Ironwood, that's actually state land also with a long-term lease. And then they, of course, renew them as needed, so, but you really can't mix, although the golf course does make money, so that is a business, and Renaissance Festival makes money, but if you did it one way or the other, I don't think you can mix the two. You could make a park or make it commercial, so, just throwing out some, for discussion there.
Okay.
There's our precedent for that.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
I knew you'd keep going.
I have a question, too. Thank you. So, we talked about regional parks, and it reminded me, we've done some work down in San Manuel and renewed the park, and I'm looking at a Google map picture of a big, empty, I think it's a 50-meter swimming pool, big Olympic-sized pool. And that's something, you know, if we're talking about parks and renewing things, this is owned by the school, no one wants to touch it because it's a, you know, big liability at the present, but I don't know what it would take to renew that pool, and if we're doing it, that might be a good investment, all the infrastructure is already there, and I think they stopped using it because.
It leaks.
It leaks.
Yeah. Problem with pools, but in the grand scheme, it's part of the ongoing, long-term solution for the county, so. Do you have some kind of direction out of this?
Yeah, and we'll continue to work with Kent, and as you provide, you know, more specifics, we'll integrate that. I think since we have Ken here, his experience has been very broad, and so, Ken, I'm going to put you on the spot. If there are two or three key items you'd like to share with the board, I think that would, this would be the good time to do that.
Well, I think the big thing, and Don was alluding to that, is where as a county, do you want to be long-term in the provision of parks and recreation facilities and services? And whatever we're bringing forth for the San Tan Valley is going to have, as Don indicated, an impact on other areas of the county moving forward. So, I think part of this is a philosophical approach to how you want to provide services. And we've been dealing with that with counties like yourselves that are not heavily invested yet, and others that are now questioning their involvement, either wanting to kind of step back from what they have historically been doing because they don't find it's financially sustainable, to others that are saying, "Do we divest some of this back to other entities?" Miami-Dade County has been turning much of its park system over to individual communities that have incorporated within the last 20 years. So, you know, it is a long-term kind of approach to how you want to deliver services, not only for the San Tan Valley, but for other communities. And then, you know, rightfully so, who are your partners going to be with us, and what does that mean? And there's certainly two issues. One of them is how you develop these facilities, and then obviously, how you have to maintain them over time. And while the price tags that Don showed you are certainly daunting, it's the ongoing maintenance that's required to keep the plan going and in place, as well as capital improvements over the long haul. And, you know, just as an example, what was probably being shown there is in about a $2 to $3 million minimum, ongoing O and M requirement if it was a county-owned, or excuse me, county-operated park system. So, it is a major investment, both for capital and operations. So, I think, and what Don and I are hoping for is a little kind of direction, and I think you've kind of given it to us, is how you want to proceed, with at least from a planning perspective, on potentially delivering parks and recreation services to the San Tan Valley.
Mr. Ballard, you said one thing, and you said $2 to $3 million ongoing maintenance. Is that for the 100-acre park or the hybrid system that we're looking at? I mean, I'm just looking at percentage of cost. If we spend $100 million, you're saying that it would be a 2% operational cost to maintain it, or is that kind of where you're going?
Well, it was basically taking that hybrid option that Don showed you with the large regional park, and then the large community-based 100-acre park, and then also those two smaller. And the idea, and it's really, I mean, it's really big picture, is saying, you know, it's in the $2 to $3 million, and I would say that's the low end, potentially, of where we are from the ongoing operational obligation, if it was city, excuse me, county-operated and maintained amenities, would probably be at minimum in that $2 to $3 million a year range, for that hybrid option with the two district parks and the central recreation campus.
Yeah, I'm just looking at just general cost, because we always talk about how much it costs, but never what the maintenance is. So, that was just nice of you to bring up, and I appreciate that. Thank you. That's just something for the future.
And we could put a little part to that, if you'd like, that defines that a little bit more beyond just a kind of a big swag that we're doing at this point.
Sure. Well, even if it was just say, "Oh, it's going to cost between 3% and 4% of the cost of the park, roughly, to maintain it," that's just something for us to know for the future. Supervisor Goodman, you had a question?
More of a statement than a question, is that the one thing that we, that we've been talking a lot about dollars and things of that nature, but when you look at a picture like this, and the family size and the family mix, the quality of life, and actually what the sports programs and things of that nature have a way of helping our youth, and when they're participating and doing things of that nature, it just has more of an impact on the quality of life, not only for them, but for their families as well. So, we're talking a lot more than just dollars and cents here. We're talking about a way of life and things of that nature. When people moved out here to the San Tan Valley area, I don't think they really looked at the park systems quite extensively, or even looked at what some of the amenities that some of the schools have. I think it was more for affordability. Somebody says, Miller always says, "Drive until you..." What is it?
Qualify.
"Drive until you qualify." And so, I think this is an opportunity for us to kind of help, that model, what is it? Live, Work, and Play? To help with that model. So, that's the final statement I've got. So, I think it's just, not going to hurt us to pursue, you know, looking at it more.
No, I agree. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none? Thank you, Mr. McGann. Thank you.
Was that pretty clear on?
Mr. Ballard, you get an idea where we're going, you can just nod, or.
Sure.
Okay, we're good. Well, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. At this time, we're going to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting until 1:00 PM. We're in recess. Supervisors meeting, like that. And this is item number six. This is, Supervisor Miller, you there?
I am.
You are? All right. This is item number six, discussion approval, disapproval of the appointment of Chairman of the Board of Supervisors effective Sunday, January 1, 2023, through Sunday, December 31, 2023. And so, may I have recommendations for Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that Jeff Surti be made Chairman for the upcoming year.
All right. And then, we have one, let's see. Are there any further recommended appointments?
I would second that.
We're not, we're not there yet. No, we're not there yet.
Oh, okay.
What we're going to do here, we're going to do recommendations, and then, if there are no more recommendations, then we'll move.
Okay.
And go to, and go to a motion and second. Are there any other recommendations? Supervisor Miller, are you there?
I am.
You are? Okay. All right. Hearing no, the recommendations. We will move to that. So, I need a, do I have a motion to recommend Supervisor Surti as the Chair?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we, how do I nominate, that we nominate Supervisor Surti as the Chairman of the Board.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Okay. And so, we have a vote. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion passes Supervisor Surti. All right.
I guess I got to do stuff now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we figured you were probably the most available.
Okay. So, we will move on. Item number seven, discussion approval, disapproval of the appointment of Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors, again, effective Sunday, January 1, 2023, through Sunday, December 31, 2023. May I have a recommendation for Vice Chairman?
I think it would be handy to have.
I mean.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, this Supervisor Miller.
Miller.
I recommend Jeff, yes, I recommend Jeff McClure.
Are there other recommendations for Vice Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, I would nominate Mr. Goodman for Vice Chair.
Supervisor Goodman, Vice Chair. Okay. Are there any, are there any other recommendations for appointment of Vice Chair? Hearing none? We'll move forward. So, let's see here. Can we do this in order of recommendation? And the majority vote wins. So, we have a recommendation for Jeff McClure as Vice Chairman. Is there a second? Or do I have a motion first?
I still move.
You still move? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? That would be four. Sounds like that's it.
I think you got a five.
Okay, okay, we're done. Okay, that's a five. Okay.
That comment I was going to make is, since his office is here at this office, I think it would be good to have a Vice Chairman here.
All right. With those two actions taken, it looks like we adjourned.